Madam Court, if you're ready, everybody's recorded or attends, Madam Court.
Nineteen present, five absent.
I got it. She's here in spirit. Okay, go ahead.
Let the record show that Commissioner Cheryl Harvey is present.
Before we get into the regular, uh, regular business, we have a guest speaker at this time. I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Conkin, if he would come to, come to the well, please, please.
Good evening. Uh, I know a lot of you, but I don't know some of you, uh, your fresh faces to me, but I'm Joel Conkin. I'm an attorney at Wilson Worley in Kingsport. I've represented, uh, Kingsport Housing and Bristol Housing and several of the TIFs that have come to this commission previously. So that's, um, how I've gotten to know several of you over the years. Uh, Dennis Phillips asked me to attend tonight on behalf of the Sullivan County Industrial Development Board, uh, to discuss just briefly, uh, how a TIF could work at exit sixty-nine. So, so I'll just take just a few minutes and walk through the logistics of that. So, in a housing authority TIF, it is required that you create a redevelopment district and make a declaration of light that the property needs some help to redevelop. That is the procedure that we've used in the past, uh, for the TIFs in Sullivan County with the possible exception of the Pinnacle. Uh, but with an IDB TIF, the process is a little bit different. There's not technically a district created. Instead, the industrial development board, through what's called an economic impact plan, negotiates and identifies an area or areas of the county, or in this case, the county, where TIF would be appropriate for use to help incentivize development. And then they would negotiate a deal, a trend, uh, an agreement with the developer which spells out the terms of the incentive, perhaps the amount of the TIF, how long the TIF would last, and then exactly what would be built at that location by the developer, you know, in exchange for the incentive. And that's called an economic impact plan. Before that economic impact plan can be approved, state law requires that there be a public hearing held, and that just gives the public, taxpayers, uh, you know, any interested parties, the ability to review the agreement and then give their input, just like in a zoning hearing or whatever. And then once, assuming that that hearing goes well, the economic impact plan would then be approved by the IDB board and then brought to the county for approval, for final approval, in essence. So that's the typical process of how that would work. A district does not have to be created beforehand like it does with a housing authority TIF. Uh, so that's the primary distinction. And the other primary distinction is an IDB TIF can be used for property that is not necessarily blighted. And I understand that most of this property that we're considering is vacant land, so it wouldn't typically qualify as blighted unless there was some environmental issue or some other sort of unusual circumstance. Uh, but that doesn't mean we can't use a TIF through the IDB. So that's pretty much, I think, it in a nutshell. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Conkin. We have a few, uh, few lights on here. I'm gonna begin with Commissioner Aker, and then recognize Commissioner Irson afterwards. Commissioner Aker, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Protem. Uh, yeah, Joe, so obviously I've worked with Joel many times. Like I said, the city, what we do through the Bristol Housing is a little different and everything. And, um, so this process, are we waiting on the IDB to decide to have hearings or move forward? Or where are we right now? Cause I mean, I think it's a good idea, right?
So I think if a developer came to the IDB tomorrow and said, "I am going to build X, Y, and Z on tax parcels one, two, and three, and I need a TIF in the amount of X to help support that project," then the IDB could negotiate that, hold a public hearing, draft up the deal, approve it at their board meeting, and then bring it back to the commission.
Okay. So, again, so we're just, so we're just kinda waiting, I guess, to see if anything happens. But I think it's known that we, we would like that area developed.
Right.
And then if, if the right project were to come around.
Right. Well, I think it's totally appropriate if the commission wanted to pass a resolution that in essence said, "We support the use of TIF in this area, but I do," you know, "I don't know the details of any projects. There could be one ready, totally ready to go. I don't know." But until that project is identified and you, is a known quantity as to exactly what's going to be built, it's pretty much impossible to approve a TIF because you don't know what the possible amount could be because you don't know what the improvements are, right?
Right. Yeah, and I'll say that for those of, I mean, the former commissioners that have done some of those TIFs that I, I've been a part of, you know, Joel's very, uh, good. You'll get these, uh, accounting reports, and it goes through the whole litany of, of the numbers and everything, and so, uh, all right. So, so the IDB-
And we would need that for this kind of project.
Yeah, exactly. And then so essentially, the IDB can work with people, figure something out, and they'll hold their hearing, go through that process, and then bring it essentially to us to vote up or down, I guess.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Commissioner Irson, to be followed by Commissioner Vanover.
Just from listening to what you said a second ago, as far as the, the timeline of things, it kinda seems like we're on stage four, but we haven't started step one. So I'm trying to make sure that, that, are we doing it in the right way? Because it sounds like hearings need to happen, which haven't happened. The IDB needs to come to us, which hasn't happened. But we're looking at this zone. So, I mean, is this something that, I'm, I'm fine with doing it. I'm, I like the whole idea of it. But I wanna make sure that we do it the right way and the right process because if we don't, well, first off, we look bad. And second off, if somebody doesn't want it, they're supposed to have a hearing that we haven't had, then they can sue and try to stop it. So that's just question.
Well, I saw the resolution that was in the board packet, and, you know, I don't, you certainly aren't approving a specific TIF for any specific project, even with this resolution. But I do think it needs to probably, it probably should be words meant a little bit to make it clear that you're not creating a district because that's really, one, you technically don't have a legal authority to create a redevelopment district because that would either be the housing authority or the IDB. Uh, but I don't see an issue with you passing a resolution that says, "We think TIF is a good idea in this specific area, and we want the IDB to pursue that as appropriate with potential developers." Uh, but you, the card is a little bit before the course, I think.
Commissioner Vanover.
First of all, thank you very much for being here. Your expertise on this is invaluable to us, and thank you for your time. Um, pretty much answering my question with Commissioner Irson there, but it's actually the IDB's responsibility to create the TIF zone, correct?
Well, using the word "TIF zone" in this context, not exactly correct because theoretically speaking, you could do a TIF through the IDB in any tax parcel in Sullivan County, okay? It doesn't have to be blighted. There doesn't have to be a zone ahead of time. Anyone could come and say, "I want a TIF for this certain project," and it's, and assuming the IDB believes that that's a good idea, and they can show economically that they need the TIF to help, you know, to assist through the development in order to make it happen, then it could be done for anyone. So there doesn't really have to be a zone ahead of time. But having said that, if there is a specific area the county really wants to emphasize development in, I see nothing wrong with saying, sort of, saying, "This particular area is, is an area where we would strongly consider TIF requests because we wanna see something happen here." So I don't, I don't think that's wrong at all. I think that's probably appropriate.
But our job as county commission would be just to, to approve it, once it's done.
Once the development is identified and the, the plan is negotiated and approved by the IDB, then it has to come back to the county commission for final approval because the details of the TIF are in that plan, you know, again, exactly what's going to be built, the length of the TIF, and the amount of the assistance.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Aker.
Yeah, sorry about this, cause I was trying, I was thinking about waiting until, uh, maybe we went over the resolutions again, but I'll just go ahead and say, uh, I think, and I mean, I'm, I'm all for the TIF, but I don't think we ought to pass any resol, for me personally, unless I hear a good reason to. I don't think we ought to pass any resolution or anything until, uh, cause I don't wanna give anyone a false sense of, of hope that we're gonna approve any TIF that is brought forward. I think it, we, it, yeah, so we don't even have to do zone like, like Commissioner Vanover said. Cause it's a pro, for the county, it's project-based, whereas like in the city, we have redevelopment zones that have kinda been designated and all that. Still doesn't guarantee you're gonna get a TIF, but it does help. And I think since we haven't really done any of these things in the county, I'm excited about the opportunity there, but I don't wanna pass saying we, we, uh, for me, right now, I think, I'm backtracking a little bit on the resolution saying, I don't think we ought to pass a resolution saying we support TIFs. And then what about if it's a bad TIF and we don't support it? Uh, I think we gotta look at it from a project, project-based type thing. So, but as always, Joel, good to hear from you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments, Commissioner? Commissioner King.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, Protem. Um, I think if we start doing this, we're, every developer in Sullivan County that's ever gonna do a project in Sullivan County will come in and say, "Well, if you did a TIF for them, you, you need to do a TIF for me because, you know, asphalt's gone up, uh, fuel's gone up, everything that I do's gone up, the price of labor's gone up." So, you know, there's all kinds of things that a, a developer could say that, you know, "I can't do this project because, you know, when I, when I started this, if the, the price was this, and now it's, it's gone up, and I, I can't afford to do it now." So are we gonna do that just on economics, or is it gonna be something that, uh, and, you know, I'm, I'm with you as far as doing it on a base, based, every project come in here. But I just think we're opening up something that, uh, every developer that, that's gonna do any kind of development will say, "Well, if they're gonna get, give tips out over there, I'm gonna over there and stick my hand out, and I want one too, if it can be justified." And right now, I think it can be justified because people that's already started developments, gone through, you know, the first phases of it, and with the price that everything's gone up, they say, "Well, I can't afford to do it no more. So I need a TIF to, to finish my project." So I, I just think we're opening up something that, you know, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a flood. And once we do one, I think every developer in Sullivan County, yeah, and, and the county part will come, be coming to us wanting to, you know, handout to, uh, get their project done. And I just, I just don't think it's, uh, and again, you know, if we do these tips and we're moving this money on down the road, you know, when are we ever gonna, you know, get the tax? You know, we're just, you know, moving it down ten years, twenty years, whatever we do the tip for, or that money's there, but we're moving it on down the road. When we gonna be able to get it and spend? Well, but, you know, it's another question. So I, I don't know. I, right now, I, I'm just, I can't see doing it because I think we're just, uh, opening up something we don't need to be messing in right now. Thank you.
And Mr. Conkin, you can respond, and then I'll recognize Commissioner Crosswatt.
I'm not sure that was a question, but, uh-
It's, it's open discussion.
I mean, I think that's a very legitimate concern to say that you don't want to use TIF for projects that either don't, don't really need the TIF, but it's just padding someone's pocket. That's all, I mean, that's a legitimate question for every TIF that comes before the, this commission or has ever been done, really. So there is an effort made to review the projects pro forma and determine whether they have a reasonable profit margin before the TIF and after the TIF. And, you know, there's real effort made to, to try and determine whether this TIF, the TIF is really necessary for the project. Is that a perfect, you know, uh, perfect solution? It's, it can be difficult to review those pro formas, I'll just say that. But, um, we said that before, you know, when we first started doing these TIFs twenty-some years ago, I think it was ninety-nine, when we first did the one for, the first one was East Dum Commons. That was the old Kingsport Mall. And there have been several TIFs, I'd say, maybe fit a dozen, fifteen, something in that neighborhood, but I don't think it's been a floodgate. And to a certain extent, there has to be a certain, one, the commission can always just say, "No." Two, there has to be a certain element of size to the project to justify the expense and the time and the effort that it does take to put a TIF long together and the, and go through all the public hearings and all that sort of stuff. So some element of that that keeps it from becoming too big of a problem. But the other, on the other hand, they are very common. I mean, they are handed out very frequently in other metropolitan areas. So it's just sort of part of the environment that we live in to a certain extent, that TIFs are commonly used and almost expected by certain developers.
Thank you, Mr. Conkin. Recognize Commissioner Crosswatt.
Thank you, John. Uh, thank you for coming, and you asked one of my questions. It does have to be a certain amount of acreage, right?
Not really acreage, but there almost has to be a certain dollar investment to make the cost of issuing the TIFs feasible for a project.
Okay. I, I've had-
I mean, you could have a really expensive project on the half an acre, I guess, and it would still justify.
I've had code, so I did a lot of reading. So, so what it boils down, has anybody come to the IDB board yet to talk to you about this district syndrome?
My understanding is there have been, there was developers at either the July or August meeting that made a presentation. I was not personally present at that meeting. But I do believe there's a sign, you know, a fairly significant project in the works, but I don't know the detail of that.
Okay. And do we have to have a traffic study out besides the, um-
Well, that would probably be a question for Amber Tor, but the TIF itself would not require, you know, that's more of a zoning question than, than a, uh, development, development office question.
And I read something along the line, "Do, do we not have to do a letter that this is the best interest for the property and for the state?"
You only have to get state approval on a TIF, an IDB TIF, if it's longer than twenty years. And that's where that, but you're correct that there is a process to extend beyond twenty years. But you have to get special permission from the state to do that, and that's where that language comes from.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Okay, glad to be here.
Commissioner Vanover, sir.
I just wanna say that Mr. Conkin's been sick, and he's had some back trouble, and he's made a lot of effort to be here tonight. So just want everybody to know that and tell you how much we appreciate you being here.
Well, you're welcome. I'm happy to come anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Conkin. Thank you for coming. That takes us into our, our regular order of business. And I've had a request from the sponsor of item number eight. Is there any objection to moving item number eight to the front of the calendar for the purposes of, uh, the folks that are here representing the sheriff's office to, to present first so they can, they can, they can leave? Without objection, I recognize Commissioner Irson on item number eight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just, I'm gonna start from the beginning on this, just to kinda make sure that we're on the right spot on it. But, uh, this is a resolution for the Sullivan County Sheriff's Department. They're wanting to purchase software that will integrate and use their patrol cars and also be able to talk with their jail system. It's something they're gonna get next year anyway. Okay, there's a, a federal grant that they're gonna be coming forward to get. The difference is, is that according to Sheriff Cassidy, if we come forward now and have an intent to purchase and put the ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars now, then the price tag goes from three hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars down to two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, one eighty-seven. So grand total savings in the county of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand and fifty-four dollars. So it's a massive savings over getting it. The other process is that this is something that a lot of agencies are doing. Kingsport already has it. Some of the surrounding areas are gonna be getting it. And this also gets us in front of that line because once the grants start next year, of course, and everybody's got money, everybody wants the same programs, it puts us in the front of that line. So I found out a couple things, a couple of questions that were, you know, coming forward was, um, does this change the maintenance of effort? It does not. This is a one-time, uh, from us, one-time. Everything else will be paid by the sheriff's office or the grant. So one-time money from the county commission. It does not increase maintenance of effort, so the sheriff's department's not gonna get the same ninety-eight thousand from this one. Uh, the other part was, can't they take it out of their fund balance? Sheriff's office does not have a fund balance. They only get the money, and that whatever they don't spend, they send back to us each year. So I wasn't sure about that. I thought that same thing is, hey, the school has a fund balance, I thought that the highway department or the sheriff's office did also. So all this is doing is allowing them to buy the process or get the intent to purchase, and will save the county a grand total of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and get this in our systems and our cars quicker. And what that allows them to do is be very, very safe. If they can pull it behind somebody and immediately, they're gonna know, is there any warrants on there? It just makes all of the data that comes to them, it's real-time information. If everything that they were talking about in Kingsport and all, uh, let Commissioner Horne talk about that a little bit if you'd like, but it allows them to also take it, it's almost a laptop. It's like an iPad to, to some degrees. They can take it into crime scenes, they can reenact things there. The officers can have it with them so they can make it, you know, it just, it allows a lot more safety. You know, I don't think you can have too much information in your hand when you're dealing with what they're dealing with. So that's what that allows. So, uh, if you have any other questions about it, Captain Sebel's here, and he came, and that's all we're trying to hurry up, let him go ahead and go on because they, it's a pretty long day, but I'll yield down for any questions.
Recognize Commissioner, whoa.
Thank you, sir. Andy, would you come up, please? I, I spoke with Andy, I guess, yesterday. We, we talked about this, and I asked him some questions. He, he handled the questions very well. Um, one of the questions I had was what Mark was talking about, the, the funding of it. I'm fine with that. The other question I had for him was, was this gonna be prioritized for road officers first in their vehicles? And he said, "Yes," so that's, that's a good thing. And the way I look at this, I think this is also a recruitment tool for those, those folks because I think it's gonna show other agencies in the counties that's near us or, or other deputies that's looking for another advancement in their career to look at Sullivan County. And I think that's a, I think, you know, it's a good, it's a good investment for that by itself. And, uh, the, the monitoring cost of it, he, I asked him about that, and, uh, I think it was gonna be added on to what you all are ready to pay for monitoring of the equipment.
Right.
And, uh, I think it's from twenty-five hundred to three thousand vehicles, what I think we talked about. Is that about?
Right, somewhere in there.
So, uh, I'm, I'm in support of this. We, we had a long conversation. I think it's a, I think it's a good tool, like I said, for them to, uh, to get new folks to look at Sullivan County Sheriff's Department. And right now, I think it's something we need. So, Mark, I appreciate you on the, on the resolution, and I appreciate all the questions that Andy gave, uh, response to the other day. I, I think this is a good thing.
Officer Sebel, you're more than welcome to address the commission, sir.
This will really bring us forward if this is the direction that we're able to go. The grant that we are wanting to use for this program, unfortunately, we will not have that awarded. Uh, earliest will be in March. So we don't know what the cost of this, uh, you know, quote would go to, you know, after next month. So, um, as Commissioner Irson said, you know, it's gone from three hundred and some thousand down to two seventeen. Uh, and we're really willing to jump while we can. We see it as a reality. We've been planning for a couple of years, how can we do this? And it will really work well with our jail system, uh, same company, the information flows well. Uh, nine-one-one, I was told this afternoon, uh, Sullivan County nine-one-one is meeting Monday. And they will also, uh, from my understanding, entertain the motion to upgrade their software that they use to the same company as well. So from the time that nine-one-one call comes in, it, information's gonna flow seamlessly all the way till it gets to the jail, bottom line. And information will go back and forth all, so it's, it's not just one-way information flow. Uh, this ninety, ninety-eight thousand, six hundred will be a big shot in the arm toward a bigger goal of, the possibilities, really, uh, we've got a lot of possibilities with this program. Uh, the jail's already been able to do quite a bit with this, uh, software that it uses. Things that we really didn't even anticipate that have been, uh, a, a big, a big help to us. So we appreciate your, uh, your support and, uh, you know, appreciate you all entertaining the motion.
Recognize Commissioner Horne.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Daniel. Can you speak a little bit about, as a detective at a murder scene, you're conducting an investigation, what this system will do for you as a detective?
One of the most frustrating things, I think, probably across many careers, but especially in law enforcement, is being out somewhere and not being able to get the information that you need on the guy that you're dealing with, guy or gal that you're dealing with in front of you. What this will do is basically what a dispatcher would be able to provide to you, you will have at, at palm of your hand, or a laptop, or whatever equipment they, they decide to go to. Our patrol officers love it. They love the, uh, the availability of the information that, that they have and, and the, uh, speed at which they're able to get it and not have to wait and rely on somebody else to get it. They can get it themselves. As far as us in Detective's Division, we, um, are able to take our tablet that has a keyboard, so it's basically a laptop, out to crime scenes with us. We can access, uh, our recording system that they'll be able to do as well, and we'll be, be able to create a lineup if we're, if we're on a homicide scene, burglary scene, whatever the case may be, and we, we need to create a lineup right there on scene and, and show the victim or witness, and they'll be able to pick that up as opposed to having to travel back to, a lot of times, the, the crime scenes and such that we're on, the folks, they don't have a way. They don't have transportation. Um, and so we can do all that work right there on the scene and not even have to go back to the station. So I, it, our patrol officers love it. Uh, our detectives love it. Detective supervision, we've been using it for a while, and, and our, our general detectives are just starting to get up and running on it. And, uh, it just, it saves time, makes, makes things more efficient, and, uh, it's 2022. I mean, we need to have that, that technology in our officers' hands in this, and, and what Herschel says as far as recruitment is absolutely correct. Uh, young cops like cool things, and, uh, they're more tech savvy than we are, so, uh, that would definitely go a long way to, to pull some folks in. Just hope they don't pull them away from Kingsport.
Thank you, Commissioner Horne. Recognize Commissioner Irson.
Two things, just to make sure. There's several people that asked me to be co-sponsors on here. I've sent a list to John. This will be updated. So what's on here now, there's, there's other people that have asked to be. Anyone who wants to be a co-sponsor, please just let me know. Or if it's one of those where we vote everybody in a positive, go that way, that's fine, too. That's, you know, I think it's probably the best, yeah. Uh, the, the other thing I'll say is, when he was making the presentation, when we were talking to Captain Sebel, he inadvertently said something that, that just hit, hit a note for me, but call- he inadvertently said something that, that just hit, hit a note for me, because he said that they went to Kingsport, looked at their patrol cars, and saw some things there, he goes, they had a really cool bracket there. He goes, we won't be able to afford that, though, we won't be able to get that for our cars, and that's nonsense. I mean, we're sitting here talking about, you know, a, a way of having our officers be, you know, safer, and making their job easier, and then they'll do a better job. So this, the ninety-eight thousand dollars that we're giving, will actually, when you put that together with the grant money, we'll probably let them do a little bit better job with what they get. Either the laptops will be better, you know, something that they're, they're, you know, taking a lot of beatings or driving down the road and running out of cars, so maybe it'll be a little more shock resistant, maybe the brackets will be better, but this is gonna help them completely. And that, that's one of the things that always drives me nuts, when we just say we can't do what the cities do, we can. And I, I think this is one where we should, so that's all I was gonna say. Thank you, I appreciate you, Andy, thanks for coming.
Commissioner Glover.
Andy, before you leave, we just, of course, we just had an election there a couple of days ago. We just had a commissioner get elected as a constable, Commissioner Ackert. Is there a possible way that we might get one of these for his constabulary?
You don't have to answer that, sir. Totally unrelated to the resolution, but we'll let it go. Commissioner Irson, you plan to, you plan to put this out for vote next week, correct? Thank you, Mr. Sebel, for coming.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll move back into old business, recognize Commissioner Jones on item number two.
Thank you. I met with Mr. Conken.
Commissioner Jones, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I met with Mr. Conken, and we did some work on the resolution. There are gonna be some changes in it, and I will just read through those, these will go to be, put in the amendments. Just to, I'll just read down through it. Resolution, and we delete designating, and it would say, supporting the use of tax increment financing TIF for tax parcels, and you leave those in. And at the end of that last one, zero-three-six-point-oh-three, and you would take out as a tax increment financing district. And it would start then as a tool to spur development in Sullivan County. So we're not, all we're doing is supporting the use of that. And then in the first whereas, the Industrial Development Board of Sullivan County Tennessee's reviewed parcels shown in Exhibit A, and has determined that the use, take out establishment, put use of, mark out A, tax increment financing, could be appropriate as necessary. Then whereas, the IDB Board voted at its regular scheduled meeting in July twenty-six to designate such parcels as qualify, qualifying locations to be considered for potential tax increment financing. And whereas, any such financing would have to be approved by the Sullivan County Commission on a case-by-case basis following the completion. And you take out product, mark through project feasibility study and put economic impact plan. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Sullivan County, Tennessee, is simple and regular session hereby affirms the findings of the IDB and encourages the use of TIF for the properties shown in Exhibit A. For a few, add to be as an incentive for future development through the use of TIFs. And those changes, we go, we're not, all we're doing is supporting the use of TIF financing that the IDB Board approves and brings to us. That's all we're doing. We're not, that's why we changed this. So if anybody has any questions, you can't run out and say, oh, well, the cost of stuff's gone up, I'm gonna apply for a TIF. No, you have to apply for this before you even start your project. You have to have everything approved beforehand. Anyway, thank you.
Heard explanation, recognize Commissioner Ackert.
Thank you, Chairman Protem. Thank you, Sam. Again, I, we, I don't wanna go back and forth. I'm a hundred percent who's on board for this. I've done TIFs, I, I will probably bring more TIFs. But because it's a completely different situation from city to county, I'll just be honest with you, I don't think we need this resolution. And, and I don't think we need to vote for a resolution and give, until we have a project-based resolution to go forward. Because I thought, and I'll be honest with you, I thought we, I thought this was what we needed to do. Designate these parcels and all that, you know? And then talking to Tom Anderson, all that, and, but talking to Joel back there, and then his explanation, I mean, I just don't think we need this resolution. I, I really don't, and, and I'll be honest with you. I don't think I can vote for this resolution the way it is, until I see a, a, a project. Because I don't want to put parcels in there, who knows how, I mean, there, there are a couple of projects. I'll be very clear, there are a couple of projects that have been discussed and all that. So, so I, I think this resolution, just, we, we just don't need it, Sam. I mean, I'm in support of TIFs, you know that, I've brought them before, and, and I will bring more, and I'm excited about the opportunities there. I just think this, we got the cart in front of the horse. I, I'm willing to say, pull the reins back and just let it, let it lie until we have to, and everything. Thank you.
Recognize Commissioner, I'll recognize Commissioner Jones, and then recognize Commissioner Crosslight.
Well, it, we have some financial parties that are looking to see if the county would be supportive if they applied for a TIF. No, we're not, that doesn't mean that we're gonna support anything that comes in. As Mr. Conken said, we have found to say so, even if the IDB Board approves something, it comes to us as a recommendation from them. That's, that's what it does. And so we're, we're supporting the IDB Board to look at this area as being a area that we would consider TIF financing. This is, as we've said before, and has been supported in newspaper editorials and others in county. This piece of property, the county needs to look at is how it's gonna develop. This is one of the highest, actually, Mr. Crosslight asked a question a while ago. There's close to sixty thousand going both, all four ways through that intersection every day. Vehicles, lots of a lot of traffic through there, it's a lot of exposure. And those are the kind of areas that we need to be supporting, or saying that we would be supportive if a developer wants to come and apply for a TIF, that we would be looking at it. Now, his project, there's a lot of things go into one of those studies when they run a project. It's, they're projecting sales tax, and, and the thing is, if you approve a TIF, you get the property tax as whatever it is that that does. That doesn't, you're not losing anything from that standpoint. Sales tax, as that grows, you continue, you get that growth. It's just the, the growth of the property values during the TIF process that, and then at the end of the TIF, then the full value. So you're not losing, you're still gaining, especially in sales tax as it develops. And the fact that this is the only one in Sullivan County that's in the county, isn't, there's been no attempt made to hand it to. I think it speaks highly of the county to say we're willing to protect our areas for development and growth. That's the big thing, and we're, we are being protective of that. I don't know if that means anything to you or not, Dave.
Okay, I'm gonna, if, if we're ready, I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Crosslight, then Commissioner Ackert.
Thank you, Commissioner Carden. I lost my voice, I'm sorry. I want you to know that District Four, Michael Carl and Tony and I, we are very interested in doing this, and, and we wanna encourage this development, but I think we need to start, start right from the very start of the IDB Board. Let them do what they need to do, because they're the experts, we're not, I appreciate Sam working on this, because this needs to be done. But just being in our district, I do want you to know that we are supporting development there. So, thank you.
Recognize Commissioner Ackert, then Commissioner Irson.
Thank you, Chairman. Sam, we're, we're friends, I'm not gonna debate this in front of, we're, we're gonna go offline. I agree with pretty much everything you said, you're right. The problem is, at the county, we don't need to go down this step and give false sense of security to any project. This county commission, in my small recollection, and looking at all the TIFs that have ever been brought in front of it from a, from the city standpoints, they've never not passed, because this is what we do. This is TIS, this is economic development. But again, I'll be a hypocrite sometime in the next four years, but I'm, I'm not gonna vote for, for resolutions, that really don't mean anything. And that's all we're doing, we're taking up time. This, this is, everything is, is meant well, we're all on board. It's just, this, this is trouble to sit there. We've gotta go through the hearing, bring the project. It doesn't matter anything, we're not designating zones or parcels or anything, we don't have to do that. So, so, yeah, I, I, I'm off. I mean, I love TIFs, we're gonna bring more, and we'll probably approve whatever's here, but just get the project done, and everything.
Recognize Commissioner Irson, then Commissioner Jones.
Just, basically, it's just to ask Sam to, to consider it, because I, I'm hearing a lot of negative parts of this, and I don't think that we want to send a negative message. So I would actually request you to withdraw it, because if it gets defeated, I think that sends a negative message. And I think there's a lot of questions that people are still asking about, so I'm not telling you what to do, of course, I couldn't tell you what to do, but I'd say consider it, because right now it seems like it's heading in a bad direction. I'd really rather not send the bad message out. I'd really, for somebody to sit back and be watching this and thinking, now that we're not gonna support TIFs, well, that's not what we're saying. So just...
I'm, recognize Commissioner Jones, then Commissioner Glover.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Glover.
Sam, I think those changes that you're making in that resolution is, it's not gonna give it any teeth at all as far as the changes that you made. But what we need to do on some of these TIFs with these folks, if you're looking at that piece of property development, you got some money. So we need to get a process started to where that these folks are doing this, bring us a business plan and a financial statement to each commissioner, and we can sit down and look at that, see what, what their plan is for that area, what they're gonna build, and the financial statement, how much exactly the amount of they're gonna pay. We are getting ourselves in a situation on TIFs to where on down the road, it's, it's, it's not gonna be a good investment for us. And there's been some that come in here that I fully supported, there's been a few that come in here I had to hold nubs to vote for. But I think this one here, and, and what I'm disappointed in, at our last meeting, Sam, you, you made the comment that you'd been working on this for two years. I think you should have involved Commissioner Crosslight, Commissioner Con, Commissioner Leonard, in this work and process with you. And let everybody know on the front end what we're doing. Because if something does happen with this, those three commissioners, they respond to their people. Whatever the problem is, they're the ones that's gonna have to talk to them, deal with it, take care of the problem. And I think that's where we need to, just like Commissioner Irson said, and David, I don't, I think we just need to slow down on this, we need to pull it. That's your choice, but we need to pull it and come back later on when these folks start applying for this. They know, they know the interest that we've got in that area is positive, and I think that with, with that being said, I think they'll come. But until then, I think we just need to hold off before we do anything. That's my call.
Commissioner Jones, that clears the board, I recognize you for, for final comments on the, on the resolution.
I'm not sure that you totally understand about what a TIF does, I'm Joyce has been reading this week. We're not voting for anything, we're not putting any teeth into anything, to use your words, Commissioner. Well, we, well, just hold on a second.
Hold on a second, Commissioner Jones, you have the floor, sir.
What we're doing, we are supporting the IDB Board to this area that they have designated, and those parcels there. There's already other people that own property out there are interested in developing their properties because this has come forward. We've never had the interest come forward before, and they, the IDB Board is looking for our support to use it as a, something to spur development in that area. There's, there's a lot of infrastructure out there that has to be upgraded. There's a lot of things that have to be done. You just, when you're doing a development of the size of some of these, you're, it ain't like building a house out here, and, you know, you go have a plan and buy it. You said, but there's a whole lot of things that go in. That economic impact plan, that has to go for the IDB, they have to approve it and give their endorsement, and their endorsement's what comes to us. Now, the cities, Kingsport's almost got a thousand acres that they have in areas that could be developed, and they've used it extensively, so Bristol has an, has an incentive as support of the housing development, that's how they, they have to go for the housing project, Housing Authority, and then come to the cities, is that right? And, but they, they do it in an area that's being designated, they started twenty-four acres two weeks ago in Kingsport. And they continue to grow it. So if you start out, you get an area that you're supporting, what the IDB Board, they're the ones that designated these parcels. You had two maps, you had one that was a colored map, then you had one that showed ownership. But those, that are the ones that picked out those parcels to get started with, and encouraged those, develop those owners of those parcels to use this as an incentive to develop them. And that's all we're doing, is endorsing the, giving support to the IDB Board, that we would be willing to look at those if they approve them and bring them to us. That's all we're doing. Not, not voting on anything that's legal or lawful, it's just a support action.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, I'll recognize Commissioner Vanover, then I'll recognize Commissioner Carr.
Commissioner Jones, you've done a lot of work on this, and I appreciate it, you're, we gotta have growth, we gotta have things like that in our county to, to maintain what we got. But the problem I have is, you said we're supporting the IDB Board, the IDB Board's not finished yet. They've got a lot of work to do. I'd say let them finish their work, then we'll support them.
Okay, well, here we go, that's your opinions, thank you for your opinions.
Recognize Commissioner.
I think, I think you'll see that we've had, there's been support for this in editorials and papers, and local papers. And I think if you back away, you're gonna see that, well, Sullivan County didn't care if they grow it up. That's what's happened.
Recognize Commissioner Carr.
Sam, I'm totally in favor of this, I support the IDB Board and, you know, using TIFs if it makes sense. But the only question I have is, why do these developers, why do they want us to pass a largely symbolic resolution before going to the IDB Board? Can't they just go with, can't they already present their proposal and then?
They could, but there's some financial institutions behind some developers that are saying, we'd like to know that the county would be willing to look at this. That's, that's all we're doing. They're not, they know that we can vote down, we can vote that, it comes to us. They're not, they know that we can vote down, we can vote that, it comes to us profoundly. But this is just saying, we're willing to look at that area.
That's the only question I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carden. Commissioner Crosslight, that clears the board.
Thank you, John. Um, Sam, I do appreciate what you've done, and I don't want, I don't want Sullivan County to think that we're not interested in developing that. We need to, but I don't think we've started in the right direction to start with. So, I wish, um, as being a commissioner, Tony, Michael, I, that you would pull this resolution, let us start from the front, form a committee, and we need this development, we want it, but we gotta do it right. So, that's my only comment, thank you.
That clears the board, I recognize Commissioner Jones for final comments on item number two. Be presenting this, uh, at the full commission meeting next, next week. Without objection, we move into new business, beginning with item number three. Recognize Commissioner Hayes on item number three.
Uh, this resolution is to accept the 2022 Federal Lands Access Program Grant for the planned improvements at Ob- Observation Park. Uh, this will ensure greater public access, safety, and accessibility for the public. Uh, this is a grant for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and there's no match.
You've heard the explanation, anyone seek recognitions for questions, comments on item number three?
Waiver rules also.
Com- Commissioner King, you're recognized, sir.
I agree with this, uh, totally, I think it's a good thing that, that we got this. Only problem I see is, I think we need to step back and see where we're at on Observation Park, as, as far, are we going forward at the park? Are we going to give it up to, back to TVA? Or what, what's the status of the park? Where, where are we at right now with the park? And I guess, what I'd like to see is, um, I think there's a lot of improvements we need to do, and, and maybe have a complete overhaul of, uh, the way that the, uh, park is handling it right now, as far as, uh, renting the spaces out, and, uh, I'd like to see us, I think what would, may help us more than anything is maybe go to a, just like the, uh, state parks do, and, and go to a, a schedule, uh, the way that they do as far as renting the spaces. Uh, you can only do, say, a two-week, uh, period a year, and then have, uh, several, uh, day spaces that you can rent, uh, for a day, or, or maybe even a two-day, like, you could do a Saturday or Sunday, or Friday and Saturday. Uh, but give the public of Sullivan County a better chance of, of renting those spots up there, and not just have...
That's, uh, that's more of an administrative, that's more of an administrative issue at, at this point in time.
It may be, but it, when Sullivan County, this commission is the one that's funding it and putting the money into it, but, and, and I'm not trying to tell the, the mayor how to run it, but I, that's my suggestion, that we, we need to do something before we accept this money and, and go forward. We need to have a plan of where we are going in the next two or three years.
Commissioner Hayes, you wish to, wish to respond to the?
The, uh, committee on Albina meets Tuesday, uh, you're welcome to attend, as far as any, you know, anything that has to do with the camp, the camping, but this, this has nothing to do with the campsites, has nothing to do with the campers up there. This is all public access, meaning the boat ramp, the playground, the roads, the service roads, the erosion on the bank, this is they care of that, there's a trail they're gonna put in or maintain, it's all public access, has nothing to do with the campground.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, but if you look at the plan, i- i- if we're not gonna go forward with campground, why are we doing this?
I'm, I'm, have no, I've not been told we're not.
So, that's, that's a question, I mean, you know, we've, we've...
We've been with them.
Okay, okay.
Since nineteen seventy-five, and, you know, I have no knowledge that we're not gonna continue that today.
I think that's something that needs to be brought forward before we accept this and go forward with putting this in.
Well, that lease is not up until 2025, there's really no way to know what our decision will be in three years.
But can we, uh, end our lease at any time?
I'm not sure of that.
I think it's, way it's set up, we can back out of it any time. That's, that's on my only question, I don't wanna do something and spend all this money and then not be there anymore.
Well, it's free money, for one, that we're getting, it's not costing the county anything. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but even if we did, and we spent the money, and two years from now we got out of the deal, or whatever, it would, it would still not cost the county a dime.
Yeah.
And it's still gonna be public access, no matter who runs it two years from now, all that public access will still be there for county citizens.
I agree. I just wanna know if we were gonna be there to be able to use it, or somebody else going to use it. We don't know.
I don't know.
We don't know, so, the, but, you know, if we don't have a plan, then, you know, what are we doing this for?
I can't answer that question, I don't know, I don't know what we're gonna do in three years from now, I don't know how anybody would... Yeah, the commission approved this unanimously to apply for this in March, I believe, was?
Agreed, but we, at that point in time, we didn't have the, the courtroom full of people complaining about the campground either.
That's, in my opinion, two totally separate subjects.
I think we need to have a plan going forward before we spend money.
Okay, we have a, we have a full board, um...
I agree with that.
Excuse me?
I said, I, I agree, we've got a full board, it's supposed to, to, you know, be in charge of doing this, plus the mayor is, 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 you know...
I'm, I'm saying we have a full board of people sitting around the session.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said we had a full board, I, I misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
Would you mind taking my, would you mind picturing about the, so I can recognize the other folks? Commissioner Ayersen, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, uh, I'm pretty sure Seabolt's still, no, he's not, run Dwight King and that new software, uh, program, supervising outstanding warrants. Uh, yeah, there, there's two totally different things, and guys, we, we're not gonna go back and forth, back and forth, and argue over everybody. This is a grant, totally free money, and for the access, the, the camper's completely different thing. Yes, are we working on a plan? Yes, as everyone knows, with county governments, like trying to turn an aircraft carrier around with a set of oars, it, it, nothing happens quick. But this is part of a, a general plan to update the park, uh, then we will decide, probably going forward, what to do. Whether we, we, then we spend more money on a feasibility study that the TVA will require us to do, to sign a new lease. Maybe we will, maybe we don't. But we have a chance to get almost a half a million dollars to upgrade a park that is desperately needed, um, for, for access and, and all that. And that's what the exciting part is. So, yes, we have problems over here, but let's don't mix it with an opportunity to do some really good things that needs to be done. And that's part of a, a quasi-plan. It, it, the, 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 the Observation Park's got more eyes on it right now than it's ever had, probably in thirty years. Uh, so, yes, we're, this is an exciting thing right here, and so I hope you vote for it.
Recognize Commissioner Jones, then Commissioner Irson. Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, on that committee, and I'll say that, uh, being a commissioner and sitting here, I really, for all the years, never knew a whole lot about Observation Park and its observation, its, uh, management, how it was run, uh, the issues out there, and that's my fault for not following up. But we will be meeting with, uh, the committee will be meeting next week. TVA has come out with some new guidelines, actually came out a couple of years ago. And we have the opportunity to, uh, adopt some of those guidelines. Uh, I think they're pretty good guidelines, and I think it'd be beneficial. Whether we continue to operate it, uh, that's a whole nother question. But this grant, which was voted on by this commission to apply for, and now we got it, is to help with that property out there, to develop it and keep it as a park. And we'll be dealing with the management and with the issues of, of the park use, uh, in the committee meeting next week. And, uh, but we, this commission voted unanimously to support this grant, so it's a total, I don't know, I don't understand sometimes some of the things that come out, but I understand your issues.
Commissioner Irson.
Just wanted to say, I, I understand there's a lot of issues, we're having a lot of conversations, but regardless of what happens, this is federal money to improve a federal property. We're in management of events of federal property. So, they're using their money to improve their property, and all they're asking us to do is say yes. So, I, I kinda, I agree with all the other problems and issues, but that has nothing to do with this, in my opinion, so that's just where I look at it.
Commissioner Stidham.
David, I, I think we just need to put this on consent, this is a no-brainer, and, uh, move forward with it on consent, no one has objection.
Commissioner Stidham moves consent, Commissioner Hayes is in agreement, is there anyone that disagrees, objects to this being placed on consent calendar? Without objection? Item number three, item number three is placed on consent calendar. Thank you, sir. Without objection, moving on to item number four, recognize Commissioner Cole on item number four.
Thank you, Chairman Prochey. This is a simple resolution, it's a traffic safety grant application, uh, no matching funds, no new money, it's the amount of four thousand dollar. I'd like to put that on consent, did you?
Sponsor moves cons- consent counters, anyone object to item four being placed on consent counter?
I'm sorry, I just looked at something, but, item number three, it's asking waiver of rules, you can't do waiver of rules. But, but we put the consent agenda, can you do a consent agenda on something that's requesting waiver of rules?
You whip through the waiver of rules?
Yes. So, it's just gonna be first reading?
No, it's on, I don't agree on the consent.
I know, but, but I mean, can you pass something on consent agenda without doing the two readings?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect.
That's, that's why I, I asked, I asked without, without objection.
Item number, item number four is placed on consent counter, without objection, moving on to item number five. Recognize Commissioner, Commissioner Horn on item number five. This is the, this is the, uh... Okay, there we go, yeah, it is, okay.
Or in the world's heaven, ain't it?
Okay, I just got, I, I don't have Vanover on here, so go, you're recognizing me. My, my, my paper actually says Horn, so...
But this time of night, things get a little funky, I realize.
They're not getting a break, we're, we're running through.
But the, I, we, we reduced the speed limit on Bloomingdale Road last, uh, month, and now people in Orbank are a little bit jealous, and they wanna slow down up there. There's a, a place up in Orbank Road that, uh, it's real curvy, it's real windy, a lot of houses, people have to pull in the driveways, they have to back out to get out. Been numerous wrecks there, and m- most of the people in that section have actually come and requested to reduce the speed limit to twenty-five. Commissioner Murray went and drove it, it's his recommendation also, so I'd like to put this on the consent calendar, and this is to go both ways. Please, on the consent calendar.
Commissioner, Commissioner moves item number five to be placed on consent counter, any objection to the item being placed on consent counter? Without, without objection? My paper says Horn again, recognize Commissioner Horn on item number six. To be withdrawn. Without objection, moving on to item number seven, recognize Commissioner Irson.
This, uh, resolution came from the meeting we had in Nashville, we went to our fall work session, and it was a broadband, uh, issue there, Larry Crawford and I actually went to the meeting, and as they were going through it, they showed a big map, and Sullivan County was all white, which meant that we were completely covered with a hundred megabyte download speed and twenty megabyte upload speed throughout the entire county, which is incredibly wrong. So, uh, she does, the lady's name is Taylor Beatty, she came to, uh, a meeting here last Friday, and had a lot of the public here, and a lot of commissioners here, and, uh, I guess I should say one thing is I apologize for everybody not getting a notice, because I didn't realize how many email issues we're still having, a lot of people didn't even get the notification. I apologize for that, I didn't realize there were a lot of people that didn't get that. But, uh, uh, Ms. Beatty came, and she talked about the program, and the program says, if, uh... It's all about a grant program, and there's three providers in our county, BTES, Spectrum, and then Brightridge, are the only three in Sullivan County that have the speed that's required for these grants. The provider has to come and put a footprint out and say, this is the area that I wanna do a grant for, and do the grant's a seventy-thirty grant. But it's all outside of us, it doesn't cost the county a thing. The one thing that they said that we can do to help this process along is exactly what this does. This says that Sullivan County is broadband ready, and that gives the, uh, the businesses a ten percent or a ten-point bonus on their projects whenever they're trying to apply for the grants, 'cause they said the grants are very competitive. So, last, uh, this past year, the past grant was four hundred and fifty million dollars, so we're there, Sullivan County, not one penny. So, we weren't on that list, they're changing the map in December, there'll be a lot more that comes along in December. Once they change the map, there'll be a ways for us to dispute it. They had, at least five or six people were here during that meeting. She pulled up every address, and every address showed that they had coverage, and all of them were saying, we don't have coverage. So, they know the map is an issue, they, they're gonna be looking at that again in December. But this basically says, we're broadband ready, all broadband ready means is that we will expedite the process. If someone applies for it in Sullivan County, we'll expedite the process. It costs us nothing, helps the bid, helps the vendors, and helps our citizens, so, again, this is one of those, I think, that, uh, most people will be on board with, and any buy folks for a deposit will put them on as a co-sponsor, and it is under waiver rules.
You've heard the explanation, recognize Commissioner Ayersen on item number seven.
Thank you, Mark, uh, I got a lot of questions on it, just 'cause as a BTS board member, uh, the map is correct. Uh, and, and they all know Taylor, and so, uh, actually, Sullivan County's already a broadband economic, blah, blah, blah. Uh, uh, we do, uh, the way that map is, and the way people's homes are, I mean, we can spend hours on that. So, what I'm making sure is, we don't screw anything up for BTS and Brightridge, uh, 'cause they have a hundred percent coverage, believe it or not. Uh, there's a lot of other issues there, and I'm not gonna go into those right now. So, uh, yeah, so we'll be talking offline to make sure it, it's all good, 'cause they all know Taylor, and they were kinda surprised she was here and didn't know anything about it. And I, and yes, well, I was, email problems, I wouldn't have been at that meeting.
Just to get, uh, one part of that is, uh, she pulled up a list, there's sixty counties in the state that are on that list, and we're not one of them, so that's... Okay, I got you, sounds good.
Commissioner Crosslight.
Thank you, Commissioner Carden. Uh, what I thought about that meeting, I was fortunate to get the email to come, is, um, yeah, it might be broadband ready, but these people are paying more than thirty-five hundred, five thousand dollars to connect.
Yeah, we do.
And, well, that's ridiculous.
I mean, I could sit and argue this all night long.
I, I didn't, but, uh, Mark...
All right. Commissioner, Commissioner Crosslight, Commissioner Crosslight has four.
Anyway, what I got out of this committee also was that if you rob Medicare, teen care, reduce lunch... Anyway, what I got out of this committee also was that if you were on Medicare, ten care, reduced lunch, they gave you thirty dollars. Is that correct, Mark? To go towards your, you know, getting it, but they are paying you more than twenty-five. Because one gentleman was there in detail, he paid thirty-five, he juiced them down to five, yeah, it was it was enormous amount of money. So we got broadband. So, thank you, Mark, and I'd like to be able to sponsor points.
The the other thing I thought was interesting and and, you know, because someone coming from the state and they know about a lot of federal programs that that we just don't know about. I mean, a lot of people can apply for things we just don't know about. And one of those, uh, I might have said it over to the side, of the Affordable Connectivity Program is one of the ones that was really, that's what you're talking about there. So it's anybody that's on free reduced lunch, Medicare, Medicaid, there's ways for them to apply for this and they get thirty dollars towards their monthly internet fee. And most of those companies have a thirty dollar plan, so it's it's kind of designed to work in hand in hand. And during the COVID time, a lot of our kids in the school system were driving to McDonald's parking lot and doing their homework in a parking lot or going to, you know, one of the libraries. You know, so they had some hotspots, they handed out and Verizon did a lot of hotspots, so there was ways to work around it. But there are a lot of areas that don't have the coverage and you're right, I mean, some of those, you know, with BTES, I'm sure their entire footprint, they may have it covered, but I I heard there's ways that they can maybe expand that footprint too, so again, that's an offline thing, but uh, it allows them to do that and the one thing that was working out well is Director Offlowski was there for the school system and she said that later on, she said they would be willing to like open up the schools to let people come in and and apply for this. Because it's funny that a federal pro- a federal program that says, if you don't have internet, go to this website. It's kind of kind of interesting how that works, but they're gonna let them do that, so it goes hand in hand with that Affordable Connectivity Program and and I agree, I mean, there there are some things, but we're just trying to, you know, make it to where it's easier. And there's another level of this also that I talked with them today and it goes from broadband ready to adoption ready. And that's something that they're trying to get ready for next year, so we might be one of those lucky ones on the front side of to to get a little bit more information. So I was talking with them earlier today and we'll see where we go, but this is a, in my mind, it's a, it's one of those, it might be a feel-good kind of thing, it might not, it might not change a lot of things, but at least it lets someone that's applying for those grants have a ten extra points.
Commissioner Harvey, you're ready.
And I'll just clarify that the seventy thirty is seventy percent would be paid with the grant and thirty percent would be paid by the provider.
Yes. That clears the board, Commissioner Ison, you plan to run run this next week, have any waivers or rules, waiver rules, thanks for it. Without objection, moving on to item number eight, sponsored by, we we did that one earlier in the evening. Without objection, moving on to item number nine, Commissioner Jennings.
Uh, the school board has entered into, is authorizing Sullivan County purchasing agent to enter into a sixty-month lease on a copier and to execute a lease for twenty-seven hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents a month as recommended by the Board of Education. They're asking for waiver of rules, the contract, they thought it was gonna be last month, they didn't get it in in time, so they're asking for waiver of rules to get this contract signed by the end of the year and get it twice, so.
That's it, you've heard the explanation, recognize Commissioner Glover on on the resolution.
Sam, uh, written this, two thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents per month?
Have you bought a copy of this type?
What does this thing do?
Oh, it's about to do anything but deliver a baby, I guess, I don't know.
I just, I mean, I was just wondering what it does, there's there's two thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents per month.
I would say color and and coagulate and and a lot of these, I mean, look how much we run through paper here in ours and school systems, just the same, uh, the amount, the amount of use that they run those, uh.
I just wonder.
Uh, you'd have to ask Ingrid or one of the school people are purchasing that that, I'm not a copier, like Mr. Red.
Commissioner Jones, you plan, you plan to run this on waiver next week?
Yes.
Without objection, moving on to item number ten.
I've been asked if if there's no objection to your consent.
You move, you move consent?
Yes.
Is there any objection to resolution being placed, item number nine being placed on consent counter? Seeing no objection, item number nine is placed on consent counter? Without objection, item number ten, recognize Commissioner Ison on item number ten.
Sorry, been a lot of talking and I apologize, but I I don't like this, so I I apologize for over and over, but um, this has come from the Highway Department, it's an annual thing that they have to do, it's adopting the Sullivan County Highway Department Road Atlas. Uh, the only changes in page two there and it's talking about the, it's all the roads right around Eastman where they closed, where Jared Drive through there, so it's Burleson Street, Eastman Road, Simpson Street, so this is just the updated map, it took a grand total of almost a mile of roads off our atlas and that's the only changes in that, so, yeah, definitely consent agenda kind of thing unless someone has trouble.
Commissioner Ison moves consent on item number ten, anyone object to item number ten being placed on consent counter? Seeing that, item number ten is placed on consent counter, that completes our regular order of business, anyone seeking recognition for final comments? We have the board recognize Commissioner King and Commissioner Stidham.
I've turned a, I turned a resolution in and it's not in the packet. Uh, does anybody know where it's at? They talked about it at the executives and mid.
We would have to speak to Mr. Osborne about that.
You don't go out there and park them all, I'll tell you what's happened, I don't know. What what it did is pretty simple, we've got a street in in a subdivision in Honey Flats. There's people parking in front of the mailboxes and the mail carrier will not deliver mail if they have to back up or they can't get out of their vehicle to take it and put it in the mailbox. Also, it's on cul-de-sac and the school bus has trouble coming around, they have to back up three or four times to to get around the cul-de-sac. All we're gonna do is put some signs that no parking on the street and hopefully this will solve the situation.
We'll we'll see, making sure that's spread on the manifesto of the whole commission. Commissioner Stidham, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Proton. Uh, please keep Larry Crawford in your prayers tonight, he's a little under the weather tonight, this way he's not here, uh, would do that, appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Bannon, you're recognized, sir.
I just want to give everybody a date to mark on their calendar, save the date kind of thing. December fourteenth, which isn't far off, December fourteenth, we have our annual Foreign Bureau Legislative Dinner at the Ag Center. Many of you came last year, a lot of new people here, so I'll try to bring an invitation next month and put everybody's mailbox, but just try to save that date if you can, we always invite our state legislators, uh, our congressmen and women are there many times, so it's a good event, especially for people involved in our legislature, legislature, so save that date if you can.
Commissioner Oker, you're recognized.
All right, boy, I did do a lot of talking, I should have run for mayor. Uh, just want to thank, I thought Gary was gonna say something, but just, uh, thank you to all of our veterans in here, uh, tomorrow's Veterans Day. I don't know if Mr. Horn is, but he's got the tap for one, you know. Yeah, I know Gary is and of course Sam is, thanks for everything.
If, uh, if, let let's do this, if anyone is a veteran of our United States Armed Forces, I'd like like you to stand up so we can, we can show you their respect.
Oh, yeah, Archie over there, look at him.
Commissioner Jones. Uh, there are some, tomorrow's gonna be interesting, Hawkins County, Kingsport, we have canceled our Veterans Day programs. Uh, they're outside Johnson City, Love City's changed theirs, they're not having the parade, they are gonna have a little ceremony inside. But you're all invited tomorrow morning to West Ridge at eight thirty. There is a veterans service, uh, gonna be put on by the JROTC. Used to do this at Colonial Heights Middle School for probably twenty years and now it's closed, they're doing it tomorrow morning at eight thirty at West Ridge. Invite you to come. And for you veterans, Saturday morning, anybody else will have to pay, but you're invited to the Moose Lodge in Kingsport, they're having a pancake breakfast for veterans.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, recognize Commissioner Ward, then we're gonna recognize County Clerk Jacob.
Yeah, real quick, since Zane won't ask his question, uh.
Commissioner King.
Will that no parking be on both sides of the street or that just be one way?
Okay. Recognize, uh, county. Recognize County Clerk Jacob, she has announcements she'd like to make or a question.
Just following up on the discussion about the email issues, is everyone getting their minutes? You haven't been getting them?
No, I'm getting them now, as of the other day, I have, I saw it on October forty-fourth.
I can't get my email account now, it says it's disabled, why, try to log me into it.
Okay, I did want to remind everyone that once the minutes, um, once I have updated them, I do put them out on my website, so if for whatever chance, you know, whatever reason you don't receive the copy that I email you, you can always go out there, like, or I I'll be glad to print you off the copy. Just let me know.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Entertained a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?